Sleep, but we've used very similar criteria for many, many years. We're every time we we do a new tip, we try to see what areas we can do minor improvements to unless there are things in the latest federal reauthorization bill that require significant changes such as when we when we are required to do performance measures or when we had new planning factors that we have to take into account, such as the safety and security and all that sort of stuff. So we usually just do minor tweaks as we try to remove any subjectivity and go to more objective measures. And so that's what we try to do every time. And as you probably remember, if you remember the previous criteria, the criteria in the past have been broken down into here. The criteria that we use to rank the roadway projects here, the criteria for non-motorized projects, and then a third for the C Mac projects. And when we did the previous tip, Mr. Weddleton, who was, I believe he was on the policy committee at that point and on the assembly. He expressed some concern and wanted some changes to them. And we asked if we could hold off on the changes since we were kind of in the deadline phase of getting the last tip adopted. And so he agreed that we could work on more, more more significant changes to the tip criteria until the next version, which is this version. So that's what we did, and he budgeted some of his assembly funding that he gets for staff or for his office to hire Meredith Noble to help us with that updating of the tip criteria. And so Meredith and Aaron and I, for the most part, have been working on these for gosh, year and a half, maybe a little longer to to look at different criteria from around the country and look at the ones we have and try to see how we can meet some of his goals, which among other things, we're trying to connect in the the idea of land use with transportation planning, which is something that the FHWA is very interested in us doing. Making that connection to land use planning into transportation planning. So what we came up with is what you have before you, and I want to emphasize as clearly as I can. These are draft. These are staff effort only. And when I say staff, I mean, Aaron and Meredith and I, and there may have been some other eyes on them that I'm blanking on right now, some AMAT staff. But for the most part, that's it. And we, you know, the kind of the timeframe we're looking at is to to go over this in our session today, however long, I think we have two hours set aside, but probably won't take that long, but it could to chew on them a bit today and answer some high level questions and then let all the staff and agency folks that are online or that might be connected to it have a go at it and give their thoughts. And then come back next month and come through the committees and see if they're ready to be released. You know, this is the current tip goes through 2022, and we need to make sure we get the next to 23, 24, 25, and 26 tip adopted in time so we can keep rolling with our program. Let's see here. The only other thing I want to mention is that so again, we had three different sets of criteria before roadway, non-motorized and C Mac. And we're kind of lumping the roadway and non-motorized in one, and then the C Mac criteria will be its own separate one. But with that being said, that we're lumping roadway and non-motorized into one, keep in mind that our AMATS policy and procedures still reflect the idea that we have breakdowns of percentages that we use for each category. So we spend 10 to 15 in the policy and procedures, we talk about how we will spend 10 to 15% of the total allocation in the tip on non-motorized projects will spend. These are off the top of my head. I believe it's 10% of our allocation could be 15, but something like that, either 10 or 15% of our allocation on C Mac type projects. We'll spend a certain percentage of roadway and then it's 15, 10, 15, 20% of our roadway allocation on pavement replacement. So those breakdowns are still there. And so when you look at these criteria and you see that they're all lumped into one. Don't be as concerned that if a roadway project scores low, that means we'll never see any of those because no matter where they score, when we look at the roadway category, we're just putting roadway projects in there. And when and when we look at non-motorized, a project may score the highest non-motorized project may be scoring 15th or 20th. But we still have that non-motorized allocation that we're going to spend just on those non-motorized projects. So any questions on that kind of big overview before we start going through these separate criteria?
Okay. Just you you start just to remind everybody that this is being recorded so we can put it up on the website after the fact.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. We are not going to provide or produce minutes from this. This is more of a free flowing discussion here. But there are people who have asked to, they're not going to be able to make this meeting. So if you could post the recording so they can listen to it later. So that's kind of what we're looking at there. So any other thoughts or questions before we start chewing on these?
Craig, Dave Post here, just to, just to clarification, I've kind of been with DOT staff kind of prefacing this with the notion that historically, AMAT funds have gone to non-NHS type facilities. But one of the things that we have seen during our tenure here, Craig, is the vast expansion of the National Highway System Network back in MAP 21, when they included all of the principal arterials as portions of the NHS. So for example, you know, we went ahead and devoted AMAT's funds to the extension of C Street South to Minnesota. That's now a national highway system facility. We went ahead and devoted AMAT's funds to the Dowling Extension West to Minnesota as well. And now that's a national highway system facility. We also devoted extensive funds to the old Seward Highway, and that's now a national highway system facility. I guess from, from my perspective, you know, there's it's kind of a policy level decision as to whether or not you would or wouldn't, but there's really nothing that's precluding AMATs from going ahead and spending funding on national highway system facilities. And indeed, you guys have been typically not construction funding, but for example, you've gone ahead and spent funds on like, for example, the planning environmental linkage of the connection of the Seward and Glen highways. Do you have any further guidance on that or any thoughts about that?
Unless things have changed, I believe that AMAT's funds can be spent on any public right of way for the most part. So yes, you know, when, when we, when we do the ranking and scoring, the ones that bubble to the top typically tend to be those higher volume facilities, I guess. And but it's still, as you know, the you know, the AMAT's policy committee can always add projects at the end if they want to, even if they may not have scored high. That's what happened with Mountaineer Drive that got added, even though it didn't rank and score as high. So that, you know, I, other than that, I guess I don't have any real comment on that.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. So first section here is the safety section. I will tell you that after looking at this earlier today in preparation for this meeting, Aaron and I were looking at it and thinking, okay, so it's great in that it's certainly fairly objective. It just talks about the number of serious injuries or fatalities. It does have that last category that says, you know, if it's a, it's a new project, you know, an extension or something that doesn't obviously doesn't have any crash data, or if it's an area or roadway facility that doesn't have any crash data or even a non-motorized one, but that, you know, the powers that be, the MOA traffic and safety folks or the DOT traffic engineer think it would definitely prevent crashes or serious injuries. It could still get some points, even though it didn't have some serious injuries or fatalities already documented that location. So gives us a little wiggle room there, which I thought was seemed like a pretty good idea to allow the, you know, the experts in the area to say, we can see that this probably isn't, there could be an issue there. So even if it didn't already have some documented information there. So and then so that's that first little grade section there. We're talking about the next section being safe and accessible pedestrian and bike environment. And those things would probably be growing out of the non-motorized plan or the the Vision Zero Plan. The last section talks about the MOA Fire Department Forming the Emergency Response Times. And that's something we've already had conversations with the Fire Department. They would help us when it comes to the ranking and scoring of that. There used to be some documentation on that. That was easiest for us to get to, but we haven't been able to track that down as easily. But they have it and they already agreed they would be happy to share that with us and help us when we are doing the ranking and scoring of these projects. So does you have a question? Someone have a question? I see Scott Thomas has his hands up.
Sorry, Craig. I'm sorry, Craig. I'm bad at the controls. I was trying to put it together and not hit send, and I didn't want to interrupt, but
there I should, I'll try and pay closer attention to the hands being raised with this many people. So
No, just real quick is I appreciate that you don't have to have crashes. You, you have the bullet on predicting prevention and sometimes we're really literal, myself and the city traffic group, we will think prediction could be a whole study. But I wanted to just throw out there for you, I put it in the chat bar that another word besides a prediction or a study or a simulation is just that we concur using information we have. I just threw maybe a different word in there. Prediction might mean something formal, but I want to offer to be less in less formal. And I gave you maybe a suggestion for footnote one is besides the Muni collision report, we can, we, we tend to use known practices or known tools in this handbook or the clearinghouse online from federal highways where if it's a certain type of treatment, it has a benefit. It takes some of that subjectivity away where you're just saying whatever the engineer thinks, you can say, well, the engineer can actually back that up with a you know, a whole list of things. I just want to let you have that if you want.
Sure. That's great. That's really helpful. Those are the kind of comments we absolutely need, you know. We, as far as I know, the three of us, Aaron and Meredith and myself, I know I'm not, and I know Aaron isn't an engineer. So any help in that area is great. Appreciate it. So I see Jim has his hands up. He is on, you're on mute though. So
I was waiting my turn.
You are so good at this.
I was gonna just kind of comment on you've got safety and safety scoring criteria. And I'm scratching my head on how bike amenities as a is relevant under the safety scoring criteria. I could certainly see it under the livability criteria, but I don't see that it has any place in the way it's currently presented where it's talking about bike lockers and other things that are make that makes it relevant to the underlying safety. Bike safety improvements is two above it, which covers bike safety improvements. Why would we have bike amenities as a second item for scoring?
Yeah, that's a good point. I think, I think that's probably a good suggestion is that might make sense to be in the next category under reduces auto dependency. We might be able to tweak that and move that down there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was my point. That's where that belongs, not up here.
Yeah, yeah, this is trying to focus really on safety. So that's a good point. Thank you.
I also wanted to point out that I'm a little bit concerned when I'm seeing we've got 12 points total for safety considerations in a city that's supposed to be working towards Vision Zero and 26 points towards livability. When that's not supposed to be our highest priority. And I just think that kind of jumps right off the page when I'm looking at this. Once we get out through the public process, we can certainly chew it some more, but putting a two for one or something like that might make a way to rectify it. But I, I think we've got the focus in the wrong place on this list.
It's almost like you were on our call this morning because that's exactly what Aaron and I said is we, you know, we've been looking at these and you get blinders on for a while. And you just kind of get stuck in your mode and you, we looked at this this morning, went, wait a minute. It seems like that's a little off. So we, we recognize that already. That's a, that's a really good point. We'll, I guess in the next month before it comes to the, back to the TAC, we'll work on figuring out how to, you know, retweak those points to make them sense because safety is
just to be real clear, I'm not saying the other stuff isn't important. I'm just saying that I continue to think that the top priority and the most points needs to be focused on addressing the underlying safety concerns out there to make it safer for everybody.
Yep. Yep. If I've learned anything over the 18 years I've been doing this, it's that safety is always the number one priority. And we just didn't, my, it just didn't jump out at us this morning. So you're, you're, you're on the ball there. Okay. Mr. Post, you are up next, sir. You're on mute. There you go.
Yeah. Um, I, you know, I just to kind of back up the, the thinking that, you know, Craig, you and Aaron and Meredith have already had too. I was looking at the, the 2017 survey you guys did as a part of the prelude to the last MTP effort. And certainly improved safety was number one. And so you can go ahead and, and look to that is already receiving some guidance in a kind of public format to go ahead and further weight safety. The other thing to go ahead and look at, the, the second one, only a little bit behind improved safety in that, in that survey. And unfortunately, it's a couple of years old, but I think it's the best that's probably available right now. And I, I don't think public sentiment usually swings wildly. But the second one, which was a close second, was improved travel conditions. Oftentimes when you're dealing with a traveling public that is predominantly dependent upon the automobile, you're looking at things like congestion, travel time reliability, you know, level of service, those kinds of measures here. And that's something that I think is largely devoid of in, in, in this criteria. That's proposed right now. So I guess I'll, I'll leave it at that for the time being. Thank you.
Okay. Unless anyone has any other comments on safety, we can move on to the next category, which is the livability one.
I do have one on safety. Sorry, Craig. Only because that's my, my big one. I'm going to throw it in the chat bar as well for you, just to help for your consideration under fine tuning, if I can hit send. And Dave helped us out with this. A lot of times we see that maybe the old, old language, if it's been around a while, it says that if we locate something, you get points. So under promoting and you see located on a high vision network. I've, in all our reviews, working with AMATs, we've said sometimes the solution isn't right at the problem spot. It might be providing an alternative. So I'm just sending you some possible language where it's maybe more valuable if we improve something that's on the high net injury network, kind of like that predicting or concurring that crashes get better. If it's located, it may not be helping, but if we could we improve it? And, and also I want to recommend that sometimes a solution is really valuable if it's such as spinard or, or a secondary connection that isn't on the high injury network, but it totally benefits it.
Okay, now that makes sense.
And then I even wanted to give more points to feeding the problem, giving people alternatives, you know, because the high injury network is pretty constrained for space and change. But anything you can do for alternatives has our support. We've been echoing that in HSIP.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Great comment. Okay, moving on to livability.
Hey Craig, before you move on to livability, if I'm sorry to interrupt here, I'll keep it short. We've been dealing with criteria as we, as we work on our NHS criteria. And I found it really beneficial to go ahead and especially on the safety criteria. When you're dealing with the numerical, you know, kind of allocation of points based upon the number of, you know, crashes and the type of crashes, we found it really critical to kind of go ahead and beta test that. Because you can go ahead and easily and quickly go ahead and say, you know, three or more and you give it this points. But until you actually go back and look at the specific type of projects that you're getting, you don't really know whether or not that, that upper limit of points is even achievable or obtainable by the the type of projects that you're considering. So I guess just a, just a strong encouragement to go ahead and, and attempt to beta test in particular the safety criteria before you really go ahead and go to any next steps. Thanks.
Yeah, I will say that Aaron and I did just that with, I think, five or six projects. And, and things seem to filter out similarly to how they did with the previous criteria. But that was just two of us and just a few projects. So it's always part of what we try and do is do that kind of ranking scoring with old new of a few projects to kind of see how they filter out because you're right. It may look good on paper, but there's a reason why you actually need to do it and see if your project criteria make any sense. So we will add that, we will continue to do that as we go along. Okay, livability. So here's kind of where we have a lot of the connection to the land use planning that Mr. Weddleton was interested in and the Federal Highway Administration definitely is very interested in. So there was a lot of effort done previously for the long range planning section of the Planning Department here at the Muni on the creation of this land use plan map, fairly recently created. And I'm sure most of you have seen it. It's, it's a map with all sorts of colors. Most of them I cannot see. So, but there are other people who do, who could do this and help me see the colors or tell me which is which. Bottom line is this is, this is a lot of stuff that's connected to land use that the work has been done. So this is a fairly fairly objective way to do this scoring right here. I see Mr. Shooty has his hands up, so we'll see if his comments on this area.
Thank you. Just for, because I'm old and forgetful, can you remind me the Eagle River Chugak Offset definition?
You know, I don't absolutely know that. I don't know if anyone is on here who might be able to tell us that.
Yes, it's Aaron. So the 2040 land use plan does not cover the Chugak Eagle River area in terms of these growth supported development features. So what we wanted to do is add something in that we could assign to a Chugak Eagle River project. So we're not sitting there and penalizing a project that comes in from Chugak Eagle River. If we didn't have the Chugak Eagle River offset in there, we wouldn't be able to score this portion on projects that came in from Chugak Eagle River. Cause they don't have the same type of land use plan as the Anchorage Bowl does.
There you go.
Thank you. And as a follow up, Aaron, again, because my memory is old and fuzzy like Craig. Is there a similar offset at all for Girdwood?
No, because Girdwood is not within our area, so we cannot.
Okay, never mind. Thank you.
Okay. Next section is relating to environmental justice or EJ. There is a really spectacular tool available. It is the EPA creates it. It's an environmental justice screening tool. If you haven't, haven't checked it out yet, it's, it's just a wealth of information and it provides all of this information on minority populations, low income populations, et cetera. It's really a powerful device that we found a few years ago, or someone shared it with us. And so that's a great and fairly simple and very objective way to quantify that these categories. So unless you have any questions, we can move past that. So these reduces auto dependency. This is related to the non-motorized and or transit stuff. This would be the great place to put the bike amenities, one that Jim mentioned earlier. Can slide that down there and figure out how to make that work in there fairly well. The complete streets checklist. So that is something we are working on. And I think it's almost ready to go, but it it, you know, related to complete streets policy that we have at AMATs, this is the checklist, which you'll be seeing soon, I guess. If it, I don't think we've shared it yet, but Aaron, we haven't shared that yet. Have you just sent it to me, right?
I just sent you a PDF of the completed complete streets checklist. One thing to note on there is we're still trying to figure out points to be able to determine how a project ranks high on AMAT's complete streets checklist. We may adjust that to say, does it meet the complete streets checklist or does it not, based on the number of points it's given? So, you know, please comment on that when we send it to you about what you think the point should be like. Thank you.
That's why this is draft, because we're getting there. Thank you for your editorial comment, Mr. Mr. Emerson. James Starzak, you have your hand up.
Yeah, just wanted to circle back to like the EJ part there. And it's kind of, it's kind of a overarching comment that I have with the, with, with the criteria is, you know, it, it's so, it's really location based rather than outcome based. And I feel like that it kind of misses the point similar to what Scott was saying about, you know, something may be able to affect an area outside of the project area or, you know, or, or like with safety, you know, just because it has injuries, fatalities, does this actually address that? You know, you could build a six lane highway through EJ environment. That's not exactly environmental justice, you know. So just kind of kind of steering away from these location based criteria more towards outcomes, I think would, would be beneficial.
Well, it might need to be tweaked a little bit, but the, the, the language there says located to promote environmental justice. So we, I mean, the idea is there, it's that it's located to promote it. We have to tweak it a little bit to get it. So we add that notion, obviously, EJ is something that the feds are very, very much focused on and wanting to make sure that you either do something that is going to assist them or is not going to harm them. So I understand, I understand your comment. And we'll see if we can tweak that a little bit to make it so it says it's located there and it either helps or obviously lose some points if it harms.
Yeah, I think that's, that, that'll get you closer to your intent. Cause I, I, I see, I understand the idea is located to promote environmental justice. But then the actual measures are just, well, it has, it's in the 80th or greater percentile minority population. Yeah, like those, those things aren't connected. That, that's an, that's a EJ focused area, but is it promoting?
Yeah, I got it. Okay. Mr. Post, you have your hand up, sir.
Yeah, just kind of building on what James was saying there. I mean, I think having kind of a clear definition of what it is that the projects are trying to accomplish or the criteria is trying to support would really be helpful because although you do have within that sub criteria, you do mention located to promote the, and to promote environmental justice. It can mean a lot of different things. And so having some clear kind of a definition on what you mean. But that is one of the few sub criterias that really has even that level of definitiveness to go ahead and promote environmental justice, which is kind of vague. But some of the other sub criteria is just, you know, health equity focus area. You know, that's, you know, whether or not it is or is not located in there. That's, you know, whether or not it is or is not located in there. So a lot of the criteria here really is kind of locational based. And I and I think for you to be able to kind of effectively go ahead and allocate points to it, you're going to need to get. Either the projects or the criteria. And I think it needs to be in the criteria for it to be consistently applied. To go ahead and define what it is that you're trying to promote. I think that would help in terms of consistency. It would help in terms of. The individuals that are actually trying to go ahead and conceive of what a good project is for nomination. Locational based. Projects do not recognize whether or not there's an actual. Kind of a benefit to the concept of the area that you're trying to promote. Thanks.
Okay, let's see, I see Aaron with his hand up.
Yeah, so I get what all of you are saying, but it would be really nice if you could come back with some kind of recommendations other than. Location isn't good, because the problem we've encountered with these criteria based on the past. And all the efforts everyone's done then is it's very subjective. So we were trying to change it to a more data driven, objective approach. So if you see things like this in here that you have problems with. It would be greatly appreciated if you could make recommendations on how to get us to that more. Objective driven approach that's not just the location based. Thanks.
Yeah, and again, that's why that's why we're in. In draft mode right now. This has been looked at by just a few people and you tend to get tunnel vision and. So that's why we're bringing it to you so you can. Help us improve them and get them where they need to be. I see Barton has his hand up.
Yeah, thanks. And to Aaron's point, I've been doing a lot of research on equity analysis for transit and. The Boston MPO has done kind of just what we're talking about. They've taken the location. Out of the scoring criteria and they're building equity. Goals into other sets of criteria that really are focused on. Project impacts, so giving more points for like improving ADA accessibility, improving the bike network, reducing transit vehicle delay. Things that are kind of, I think, already built into this tip criteria. That maybe we can build more points in and make it a little less subjective. And I can provide more details in my comments when this comes around.
Great, thank you.
Great, Bart.
I did, I did take a spin by them yesterday, but didn't find. Didn't find that portion of the criteria yet. So I was actually looking at Boston's criteria yesterday. So. Okay. Anything else on? Linker at just finishing up the EJ section. I did the auto dependency. So the rest of them are things that are. Those are parts of the land use plan map, I believe. So. Any other questions on that part? Oh, Mr. Shooty, get your hands up.
Thank you, Craig. Would. Would you and Aaron be able to set up a time to brief and gather input from the chief equity officer at the MOA on this section, please?
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
That's a stellar idea.
Yes, indeed. Okay. See, there's a comment. Want to make sure don't pass. Okay, there Barton shared those criteria. Great, thank you. Let's see. So that takes us down to. I guess we'll go down to the environment one in the last section unless someone has any questions as we go. Not the last section, sorry, there's three and four. So environment. This first part improves air quality and reduces congestion. There is, again, as I mentioned earlier, there will be a separate C Mac. Set of criteria again. So that will hit a lot of that congestion management air quality part, but in case those projects. Also fit under the roadway and non motorized, we get to them here. We talk about something is included in the TSMO Strategic Implementation Plan and or the AMATS Congestion Management Process Plan. TSMO plan obviously is not complete yet, so that would be something wouldn't work with this. Go around of this tip, but hopefully by the next tip four years from now. It will be in ready and done and all that sort of happy stuff. So this would just be included in the CMP. Or a couple of lines down or in the. ITS architecture. So. The second section, stormwater impacts. That's a recent addition to the federal program. And that says projects addresses a specific transportation action item. As we're add the word in in there. Specific action item in the Anchorage Climate Action Plan. Making sure I'm not missing a comment there. Okay. And. We see the part about the municipal MS four and the NPDES permits. Mr. Stitch has his hand up, assuming it's this section since that's of expertise, sir.
Yes, Craig, up to that top line where you have TSMO and AMAT's congestion is your intent. One point for each being in either those plans or two points. If it shows up in either one.
That is a great question. I would say since the TSMO plan doesn't exist right now, it would just be. One point for that, but. Exactly how we're doing that there.
I think the points we were still kind of looking at, but. I think the idea is to transition away from the congestion management plan and use the TSMO plan eventually. Because the TSMO plan basically takes the congestion management plan, the ITS architecture, everything else under the sun and puts it into one document. But because we don't have the TSMO plan done yet, we're trying to leave our options open here. So we may have to reword this and say congestion management plan now. And then do, you know, when TSMO becomes available, but keep it at two points and maybe just make it to where it only scores to. Not, yeah, not and, but maybe say or something like that. We'll have to figure it out.
Thanks. Let's see, I see Shayna has her hand up.
I guess similar concern to the safety piece. I mean, it's seven points total, so not a lot. But my my question specifically is reduces stormwater impacts. And is that is the climate action plan comment related to only stormwater impacts then?
Well, it says project addresses a specific transportation action item in the plan. So that's how I guess I would take it. Although it does say reduces stormwater impacts, but.
Yeah, just being very familiar with the climate action plan. There's it's pretty broad actions for transportation. So I don't know how helpful. In reality, this will be, I can think about it and see if there's a. Way to be more specific.
Yeah, if any, any help you can give us that in there, we wanted to make sure that we, you know, we had that connection there. It's obviously a national goal and planning factor. We want to make sure that we had that connection. But clearly you're the expert on this area and we want to whatever we can. Whatever knowledge we can gain from your your brain, that'd be really helpful.
Yeah, I'll think about that. I mean, it's I'm more related to air quality improvements.
Yeah. Yeah, that obviously that's that's a natural fit there. And again, we have the C Mac category, which is where a lot of those air quality. Projects would go, but a lot of projects have some air quality components to them. Obviously, if you're, you can do certain things to a project that's going to improve air quality and it may not be in the specific C Mac category. So. Still, they're not motorized. So, okay. All right, I don't see any other hands up right now. The last category, the last part of this environment category was the project deliverability. We'd had this criteria in different ways and different tips criteria in the years past. And they usually said you get certain points for few obstacles, certain points if a lot of effort is required. And then you get negative points if something looks like it's almost insurmountable. And then we were just kind of. Most of the time, most projects got, well, it's going to take some effort, but we'll get there sort of thing. So it just seemed to make sense that since every project got those points, let's actually just concentrate on. If something seems like it's a relatively easy, and I know the engineers on the phone here will go, we'll just laugh about that concept. But if something seems relatively easy, let's give it some points and roll on sort of thing. So.
How about being more specific and identifying? No obstacles in the way of no right of way acquisition required, no utilities to be relocated. Those sorts of specifics would actually be specific and scorable and relevant.
Well, we had that in the past, and as I said, every almost every single project got the same amount of points. So it's one of those, if every single project gets the same amount of points, why is the criteria in there? Because you're giving everyone the same points for absolutely nothing. So this was a case of saying, well, if there's actually something out there that seems relatively easy and you can't think of any. Right away impacts or utility impacts or things of that nature, then let's just give it. Let's just give it the the points because everything else will fall in the other category. Again, we're draft. It seemed to us from scoring these for many, many years, that's what we always came up with. And if everyone gets the same points, then why are we having the criteria? Might as well have it be a zero or just take it out because everyone's getting the same point. So that's why we did it that way. Happy to do whatever the committees want to do. So. Any other questions on that? I see Mr. Post has his hand up. Dave, what you got?
Yeah, and it was kind of building on what Jim was going in saying there. It's true that in the past, you know, the ones that we seriously considered. Really weren't any that had significant. Potential deliverability problems, but it's still useful to go ahead and have that criteria in there. Quite frankly, you know, and and potentially kind of weighted, you know, more or go ahead and have the more detailed considerations than Amundson was indicating. Because we do do see times when somebody has what is perceived as a great idea. If we were able to go ahead and deliver it. And the problem is that it will be. Either impossible or extremely expensive to go ahead and deliver. And that brings to bear kind of another concept. I don't really see kind of like a cost or cost benefit. Analysis within this criteria. You guys have a. You know, fairly modest amount of money to go ahead and effectuate the type of changes that you're trying to bring about. You guys get, you know, thirty ish million a year. The amount of private development in terms of land use that's in existence is. Frankly, I think thirty forty billion. So you're you're really, you know, you're really up against it in terms of going ahead and making dramatic changes with the amount of money that you have available. So it seems like cost cost benefit really needs to be in there somewhere. And and I would emphasize much as Jim has that there needs to be kind of some recognition that. Undeliverable projects or projects that are likely to go ahead and be significantly expensive. It probably needs to be weighted adequately that you're not. Starting those projects, you know, only to go ahead and conclude that you need to back away from them after expanding a fair amount of resources on. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, my response to that, and again, happy to do it with whatever the committees want. My experience with doing this, just not quite as long as you, but fairly long is that. Two things. One, every single project comes up with, oh, there's just tons of stuff that you would have to do in terms of right of way and utilities. So our idea was. Make it so if it actually looks like it's relatively issue free, you get some points. And otherwise, everything is kind of equal. And then with the cost benefit analysis, every time I've done this and we had a cost benefit analysis criteria in there. We basically would say none of these pencil out because everything's expensive these days. So. And it was hard to find a good cost benefit criteria, a way to figure it out, but. Happy to add one in if someone has come up with a good one. I see Mr. Shooty and then Mr. Stitchick. So we'll start with Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Craig. I've got a question for you as sort of a follow up to Mr. Post's comment, which is. Recognizing cost, you know, a cost benefit analysis is important. It would we be able to say that that is actually accounted for though or accommodated in the requirement for fiscal constraint?
Well, I mean, what what happens is we rank, we get nominations, we look at every single project in the MTP and then we get however many nominations. And then we just rank and score them and then we figure out how much money we have to build the projects. Obviously, this last tip was a lot of new starts because we had done a lot of projects. I think there were two projects that were kind of carryovers and everything else was a new one. And so it's going to be hard to fit a bunch of new ones in this regardless, just due to the financial constraint of having that. Twenty eight to thirty million dollars a year. So I think it's kind of, as you said, built into that fiscal constraint. So.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to make sure that my sort of. Poor rudimentary understanding of the process lined up with that, and I think that does. And so. You know, I've just, I would offer that the the tip scoring criteria, I don't know that it needs to reflect a quantitative analysis like a cost benefit. Because of the overarching fiscal constraint. You know, really, the tip scoring is about identifying ways in which projects meet or do not meet. A whole host of criteria that are a little more squishy or a little more qualitative. So I think I'm I would be fine with leaving it out for now. But anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Yes, indeed. Matt Stitchick.
Yeah, well, just a quick comment that that. Obstacles to construction doesn't really fit within environment. So I could. See a whole different category for cost benefit analysis and deliverability, but. Doesn't sound like there's much. You know, you probably need the. The flexibility to do that at the at the final step.
Yeah, I guess you're trying to cram it in somewhere. So. All right, Aaron, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to do a quick comment on the cost benefit analysis. We've been struggling with this one a number of ways because for the MTP and the tip, it's been brought up. How do we do a cost benefit analysis? And there's been a couple of problems. One, the traditional cost benefit analysis has been AADT versus length versus cost. So it heavily favors roadway projects. So that would be a first issue. And a second issue is that it doesn't account for a lot of the things that you get out of projects that aren't as data driven. So like health, health is a big one. How do you quantify that as part of your analysis of a project of what benefit you're going to get out of it? So we've been looking at other locations like Oregon has a tool called the Mosaic tool that. Brings in these kind of non quantifiable ideas. That are based on the community's goals and in this case would be based on AMAT's goals and objectives. But it's an effort that takes a lot of inputs into it. It's. I don't want to say it's like a travel demand model, but it's a similar type of model that you have to bring in to do a good cost benefit analysis. So we looked at, you know, should we have a criteria for it? And we just found that I don't think we're ready at this point to actually do a good job to throw in a cost benefit analysis. Like we've we see in other locations and using the old way of looking at it. I don't think really gets us in the direction that we've been talking about. And so I think that to Chris Shute's point, the criteria itself is kind of our cost benefit analysis as best we can. So, thanks.
Thank you. I see Miss Alital has her hand up and then Mr. Post. Oh, you're muted again. It's like you.
Yeah, sorry. I've been having tech issues all day. So Aaron hit on a lot of the things. And I appreciate his comments about the cost benefit analysis needing to be more fulsome. I think with project deliverability in particular. Taking it from the public's perspective, when they're looking at how these projects are scored. I think they're wanting to see a broader cost benefit analysis. So if we want to be more responsive to what we often receive in public comment. I think we need to do more of what Aaron has suggested and until we're able to do that, I would prefer to see this. Not included, even though it's only one point, because what's in. I mean, the way it's worded now, you know, no obstacles anticipated for construction. I think when folks see. You know, projects out multiple years and the funding always being somewhat tenuous, those look like obstacles. So. I think waiting and coming up. So I, I think waiting and, and coming up with something better is probably the, my preferred alternative. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Post.
Thanks, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to have this kind of give and take. I think it's actually pretty productive. So I, I wanted to kind of go ahead and respond to, to some of the comments about fiscal constraint and how that would apply to things such as cost within projects, you know, within the, basically when you're considering projects. And, and the gist of it is that you have a finite amount of money. You can spend that amount of money potentially on one project, or you could potentially spend that on a huge diversity of projects. Without that analytical process, you might run into situations where you've got one, you know, expensive, difficult, high-cost project that is just a smidge higher in terms of your scoring than virtually every other project there. And that would go ahead and essentially run away with all the, the money, so to speak. So that's a consideration. The other thing that I wanted to kind of go ahead and emphasize is, I, I, I'm not necessarily advocating that you guys go ahead and utilize any traditional, such as what we've done in the past for kind of analyzing. And I, I think it's inappropriate to call it cost benefit. It's more like a cost effectiveness measure. Formal cost benefit really kind of implies something, you know, structured. But I do want to emphasize that all of your criteria here presumably, I mean, in an ideal sense, should be measuring some benefit. And then just comparing that with cost is a reasonable way of going ahead and, and looking at things. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I will say that, you know, this, this back and forth that we're doing right now is when you and I did this eighteen some odd years ago, creating criteria, they were done in a vacuum. And so this back and forth is absolutely essential and is super helpful. Because, yeah, it helps to have all the experts in the room, so I do appreciate it a lot. Aaron, you're next, and then Mr. Shutey. Unless your hand was up from previous. And if you're talking, I can hear you.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you, okay.
Sorry, a, a plane was flying overhead, so I think it muted. I think we need something either in the criteria that kind of speaks to what you guys are talking about, about cost. Because we score projects, like for example, the Seward Highway to Glen Highway project that far exceeds our ability to pay for. And that project should automatically be disqualified because it exceeds the cost of all of our years of funding put together. So like, a billion dollar project comes in, it, you know, no offense, I don't really want to waste my time scoring that project when we can't afford it in any way, shape, or form. So I wonder if there's some way for us to put some kind of criteria in or something that says if it exceeds the total available funding over the four years of the AMAT's tip, it, it doesn't get scored or something because it is a concern.
Yeah, we score the, the Seward to Glen connection, highway to highway, whatever you want to call it now, those projects, and, you know, they just can't fit in the AMAT's allocation. So, but we keep scoring it. So, anyway, on to Chris, your comment.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I appreciate Aaron's reining us back in. That's certainly been his role during our time together is keeping me in check, and so I certainly can appreciate that. I, I just want to add that, you know, I, one of the dangers of taking that we're always going to be poor approach is that we're just, we're never going to recognize the, the bigger projects that are out there, and those things will never happen. And so, you know, I, I guess it's mostly a philosophical question. Is it better to do a bunch of little things that maybe aren't moving the needle in the, in the transportation or connectivity world as greatly as, you know, one or two very large projects that suck up all the money? You brought up Mountain Air Drive earlier in the discussion. That is absolutely, you know, one of those projects that was a big heavy lift, took, you know, eats up a lot of dollars, but will be transformational for, you know, decades to come in that part of the, the NPO. So anyway, I just, I think we need to balance that. And I tend to think that it's okay to have a, a mix of those large projects as we can accommodate them, but also to do the little ones because those are equally important from time to time, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lindemood, and then Mr. Post.
To Aaron's comment, and forgive me if I'm not completely understanding where these, for lack of a better term, mega projects live. I agree that, you know, having a project in there that's going to suck up, you know, five, ten, twenty years' worth of AMAT's funding certainly feels like a waste of time to score. However, that said, there are some of those projects out there that live on either large grants or other sorts of appropriations that require them to be in the tip to be eligible to be funded. And so is, would, do we score stuff that's in, that's out sort of in the illustrious sort of category? Is that a place that they could continue to live in there so that they meet that, that funding requirement? But we don't necessarily waste a bunch of time trying to figure out how to cram them into a fiscally constrained budget?
I'm not sure if projects are, well, I, I know we always hear the idea that projects need to be in our long-range plan. And obviously, we get projects in there, and that's where we get most of our projects that we score. And for the tip, we get them out of the MTP. So they're always going to be, that's where those big creatures are right now.
Well, I know when we go after grant funds on the railroad and stuff like that, those projects are required to be in the tip. And then, so we wind up going and, and doing last minute changes to the tip and stip, which I recognize right now is somewhat arduous. But, you know, they're required to be there. And so I don't know if there's a way that, you know, because sometimes, you know, money comes along for these big, bigger projects, and we just need a place for them to be without them necessarily weighing down the rest of the process.
Yeah, well, we can always add projects that are part, that are outside the AMAT's allocation. You know, obviously, we do that with your projects and the DOT projects. And so that's always possible. It's just, if you got funding tied to it and you have a hundred million dollar project in there, it's going to be challenging in the allocation that we have, so.
Well, and that, and I, I think that's the point, though. When we go through the checklist on a lot of these grants, it's like, is it in the tip? Yes, no? Well, you know, getting it in the tip is.
Having it. I was gonna, Brian, I'm going to pile on before we move on because you're hitting exactly the point I was going to, which is there is a benefit to the whole if AMAT's has scored it, says they're in support of it, that they agree that it's needed, and they want us, the state, to go out and chase those bigger grants, and it tells you AMAT staff that you can also go chase those bigger grants. And the, that's how those, the funding ends up coming available for those bigger projects that are really needed. And if we don't score them, they don't make it on the radar for consideration in a lot of those cases. And I, I think we would be making a gross error to not include them. Fine, we put them onto that second list of not in the AMAT's funding package or not counted in the AMAT's funds, but that AMAT's tip has scored it and in fact has it on the tip list.
Well, is that the illustrious project?
No, it's actually a separate table in the AMAT's tip.
Okay.
But that's where these big monsters belong. That's where the projects that I typically am bringing to the Anchorage Bowl end up being put on. And it would be nice to have something to show that says it wasn't just Jim's idea to do it to begin with.
Yeah, the process, the process that we do is we score the projects that are nominated and the projects that are in the MTP. And if a project scores number one, and it's an eighty million dollar project, we don't put it into the tip. It stays in the MTP, and we look at it, and we, we look at it and go, okay. Well, if that's going to be funded, that's going to either have to be a, a state grant or part of the state's NHS allocation because it can't fit in the AMAT's allocation. So it, it doesn't get included in the tip, even though it was ranked, it was scored and ranked. And, but it's in the MTP, so it's still on a list somewhere. It just isn't going to be inside, it's not going to be reflected in Table Three, the roadway project, or I guess it's Table Two now, the roadway projects in the tip. It's just not going to be added in there if it's that big. So. All right, I see Mr. Post, Mr. Amundson, and then Aaron, Mr. Young and Alan. So we'll start with Mr. Post, Dave.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that I was not really advocating that the project criteria simply be, you know, overall cost of the project-based criteria. You know, I, we've been looking for, you know, and trying to take advantage of the, the low-hanging fruit and picking those low-hanging fruit for as long as we can. You know, it's uncommon for us to go ahead and grab a small project that has, you know, huge benefit right now. I think it's, it's more important for us to be able to kind of look at, you know, the, the benefits relative to the costs, not just go ahead and eliminate the big problems and potentially bigger projects from consideration here. So I, I would not really endorse kind of the concept of just going ahead and saying, you know, we're, we're, we're ignoring anything that's got a, a somewhat bigger price tag and a, and a somewhat bigger cost. And that also requires that, you know, if we're going to be looking at, you know, things like costs, then I think we need to be able to quantify benefits a little bit better. And that gets to kind of some of the other criteria that were locationally based, rather than trying to go ahead and actually document what the benefit really would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron, you're next.
Uh, yes, two real quick things. So the reason I bring up the cost is because every time we've scored, we've got these high-dollar cost projects at the very top. And when we go through and select projects for the tip, we skip over them. And people have been asking us, why are you skipping over these projects that score the highest? And we say they're the, they're too expensive for us to put in the tip. And they're like, well, where is that in your criteria? Where is that in your policies and procedures? Is that just an arbitrary decision that you're making? So the only reason I was mentioning is, is a way to maybe document it or talk about it. And I do want to push back against something that Jim said. No offense, Jim, but just because we score a project does not mean AMAT supports a project. A good example of this is somebody nominates a monorail to be put into Anchorage. We score it like all the other projects, it does not mean we support it. So, you know, kind of, kind of remember that if you're looking for support of a project. Thanks.
Alrighty. I see, well, I see Mr. Post hand up, but I, that was, now it's, now, okay. We're past all of that, now your hand is back up.
Sorry, I'll, I'll, I'll pack away from the microphone here soon here. But I, I do appreciate the opportunity here. One of the things that AMAT's is dealing with right now is that, especially with the expansion of the National Highway System, really, all of the main roads and, and many of the roads that you guys are, I think, most concerned with are on the National Highway System. And one of the things that you, you might actually think about is, is there a way to go ahead and leverage AMAT's funds with some of the line item stip funds in, in such a way that, you know, if it's determined that you guys are supportive of it and you're willing to throw a certain percentage of money at it, you know, that might be able to go ahead and bring that type of a project concept into the stip and for you guys to actually be able to go ahead and leverage funds. And I, I think, given the fact that the National Highway System expanded, the National Highway System funding expanded, and over the years, the AMAT's allocation actually decreased, I think being able to leverage your funds on some of these bigger project, bigger issues might be something you guys might want to go ahead and look at a little bit. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's see here, I see Aaron's hand up.
Sorry, I know I keep talking, but there's a lot of considerations.
Dave.
There's a lot of considerations that go into this criteria I want everyone to be aware of. When we looked at this criteria, we also had to account for the federal performance measures that we as AMATs are required to either set or support the state in their targets. And so one of the things we've been grappling with is how are we able to develop these performance measures to accomplish that? Especially since most of the performance measures are for the NHS. And they're mostly car-related, they're, they're travel or vehicle-related, pardon me, not car-related. And so it, it's been very difficult for us to be able to accomplish that and to accommodate all of the additional things people want us to do. You know, the, the livability side of things that people are putting the onus on AMATs to solve most everything for. When there are members of the public coming and complaining, we have to do everything. And so, you know, I, I just want people to recognize that we have a lot of people pulling on us in every direction to try and solve the world's problems for them. So I do want to say thank you all for your feedback so far. It has been immensely helpful. I'm taking notes because I love hearing this, this back and forth because it brings up things that, well, we didn't really think of while we were trying to put these criteria together.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's very helpful. We, not that we do it completely in a vacuum, but their staff, this is staff effort so far. So getting on your comments has been really helpful. Just as a reminder, for folks who joined us late, we are recording this work session. We won't be transcribing minutes, et cetera, but it is being recorded. So you can, for those who came in late, you can go back and listen to the earlier parts later, earlier parts later, yeah, that makes sense, at your leisure, as it were. So unless there are any other questions on the rest of that, we can go on to infrastructure preservation. I see no hands up, so we'll start rolling. That's pretty standard payment, payment condition, et cetera, that's on there. Improves intersection operations. There's a footnote that talks about such as signal equipment upgrades, adaptive signal controls, coordination with adjacent signals, roundabouts, et cetera. So if you got a couple of those in your project length, then you'd get some more points, et cetera. That's kind of what we're looking at there. And then that last chunk relates to the freight mobility study that AMATs did a few years ago. So that, that's the extent of the criteria. I know Mr. Weddleton joined us just a moment ago. So you missed the, the meat of the, meat of the topics in this, this study, the discussion there. So if you had any comments you wanted to make, or anyone else about this section or any of the other ones, go ahead and feel free. I see Mr. Stitchick has his hand up. Go ahead, Matt.
Craig, I'm curious if it might be helpful to create a statistic of total points for total project dollar, projected dollar cost, just to try to come up with some way to gauge dollar efficiency of the project? Just something that you could kind of, you know, at the end, take a quick glance at. How did this rank versus what, what the overall cost is with? Does anybody think that could be useful?
I'm just trying to figure out how to do that.
I think it's a, it, it, it's a starting point, you know? Just take the total points scored from this criteria or, or the total cost and divide it by points scored through this criteria. And you have some sort of metric.
Okay.
You know, whether that, whether that makes you feel like you're comparing apples to apples or apples to Studebangers.
I, I don't know if it's useful, and thank you for flipping that the correct way. It's, yeah.
Yeah, you get the value divided by, you got a fifty-six or a forty-three or whatever. Just as kind of a rough way to do it, I see that, okay. All right. Any other comments? I see no hands up, so unless we have comments. I see, let me just make this comment, Scott, and then we'll go to you. So the idea is that, again, these are out for you to chew on now with the idea that we take these to the Technical Advisory Committee and the Policy Committee next month. And if they're ready, if the committees are ready, then they could be released next month. That would be a June tenth meeting for the TAC with the release of June twenty-four Policy Committee for thirty-day review. So that's the idea there. All right, Scott, go ahead.
Just a, just a note on, it's, it's not a major problem. You're covered under the freight and as you're at the ending here, but I've noticed in our work on projects that freight discussions sometimes forget the, the oversized, the permitted loads and, um, and I'm sure the freight advisory committee, all your language here will take care of that, but I just, it's just a reminder and I threw something in the chat bar was some, since we seem to forget and it comes up on some of our projects, I had to slip some words in there just to remind myself that it's not just traditional freight every day, but the big loads that come out of town, you know, that are, they have, AMATS has, there's published freight routes for doubles. And I wanted to include, um, a reminder somewhere and it doesn't have to be written in the document, but that we, we, it includes that whatever the freight advisory committee asks for beyond regular daily routes. Cause, cause, cause we have issues like downtown and with turns on major intersections and that's something when we're designing, we go, oh, it's even bigger.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay, thanks. All right, uh, this would be the last chance for comment here. Uh, again, uh, I think most people already have this. If you don't have them in some manner, we can make sure you get them and take them back to your prospective experts and give us some thoughts on this. Uh, Aaron, you have your hand up.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to ask really quickly, is there a due date for comments? Um, cause I'd like to have a little bit of time to respond or make edits based on their comments before we bring them to the committee members, uh, for release. Thanks.
Yeah, so good question. So June 10th would be the TAC meeting. We would need to post those June 3rd. So. You know, if they were by the end of the month, like the 27th or so, that would give us a week to, uh, work on editing those comments. I think that would probably be enough. I can, I'll send these out again, probably tomorrow when I'm back in the office, uh, and, uh, give that due date and send them to folks. All right, I think we are, I had a couple of hands popped up again, Scott and then, uh, Mr. Weddleton.
I'm just real quick, uh, since, just so it's for the sake of discussion is under safety, you already worked on, um, whether we locate or improve the high injury network. To Dave's point, sometimes you can leverage more funds and I just wanted to let you know that I've been saying, you've heard me saying that bringing in other funds like highway safety improvement funds, or like Dave said elsewhere in the STIP can help AMATS versus your, your, your constrained budget. And so this is just a related comment to the non-motorized plan is we want to come to Anchorage and solve some of our high injury, uh, network problems. And, and if, and I'm, you've already got my language suggestions there, but if we can have more than one point, um, I'm asking for that in the non-motorized plan as well. If we're really helping the non-motorized network or, or the high injury network and maybe it's sometimes it's not on located there, but contributing a better alternative route. Um, it seems like that might be worth more points, but I'll just, just letting you know for the sake of discussion is, um, we're supporting ways to, to leverage coming in to help because it helps the whole state. This is where our serious crashes are, is in the height, for the whole state is in the high injury network.
Okay. That's a good point. All right, uh, Mr. Weddleton.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Sorry, I was late. Um, and I think I, previous meeting dragged a bunch of important people for this meeting into the other one. So I'd look forward to hearing the recording. So I just, it, and I appreciate staff, I know this, you've been working on this for over a year. So, um, it's been a long haul and I just wonder, what is the, when would this new scoring, what's the earliest it could be applied? And that kind of sets a timeframe for when we need to have things done.
Yeah, so what we're looking at doing is, uh, obviously people are going to take about a month to chew on these. Uh, the hope is that we could release those at the June meeting of the policy committee for a 30 day public review. That would probably put us into August for approval of them, just due to the timeframe of the committee meeting. So, uh, an August approval and we would, staff would then need to take those, uh, criteria and create the nomination forms and, um, shortly after that, get the non-forms to you for approval and send those out. And so this fall would be when we would, uh, start doing the call for nominations and use them as soon as we get all the nominations in, if that, that answers your question.
Okay, so nominations for the tip and then you'll score them with the new system in the fall. Okay. Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments, questions, Mr. Post with the last word possibly?
Yeah, and, uh, I, um, we've been.
I mean, you could have as many comments as you want. I just didn't know if anyone else had any comments. I didn't want to make that sound bad.
Thanks, yeah. We've been moving through this, um, uh, pretty quickly and I wasn't sure where best to kind of go ahead and interject this, cause it's kind of more of an overall question to the group. Um, but I guess I better do it now, um, or forever hold my peace, so to speak. Um, you know, one of the things that I was looking at in the criteria and that we've really been trying to focus on, uh, with past criteria was how to go ahead and address, um, kind of the concept of congestion. And, uh, you, you know, improved travel conditions in your last survey, it was, um, a close second behind improved safety. And, you know, I'm, I'm, the only area where congestion really is even a, a consideration is if it gets, uh, a couple of points, you know, if it's in the TSMO or the congestion management process plan, um, out of a total of 58 points. And that seems even less, even more imbalanced kind of, um, than safety. Um, and I'm a little bit concerned about it. I'm concerned about it in part because of the potential for pushback. If you guys, you know, pick a, a project and, and a number of your criteria are locationally based, you know, in areas that you want to go ahead and promote, you know, additional growth and redevelopment. But if you're successful in going ahead and getting a project in those locations or focusing on those locations and if, um, somehow as a result of that, a result of that criteria on a, on a global network scale, a result of that specific project at that particular location, it actually increases congestion or doesn't alleviate congestion? And it actually could increase congestion. We, um, we were commenting on the, uh, 240 land use plan. And one of the things we commonly noted was that these redevelopment areas, these focus areas oftentimes were at the junction of two major arterial roadways. And so it was oftentimes really not the ideal location to go ahead and promote a further intensification of land use, which required additional access and was additional traffic generating feature. Um, so. I guess to the point, I, I'm, I'm hoping that we will go ahead and have additional consideration to things like congestion and reducing congestion. I would go ahead and hate to see pushback, um, after you guys, um, are able to kind of go ahead and implement some of these things and have the public, truly feeling like that was, uh, you know, the direction here was, was a mistake. So again, I really think that there needs to be additional consideration of what was, uh, presumably kind of the number two, um, public concern in your past survey. And if you look at municipal services surveys on a, a nationwide basis, traffic congestion is the leading complaint amongst citizenry, uh, nationwide. And so. You know, I'm thinking that it, you need to weight it. I'm not saying that you need to weight it above all else. I mean, there may be, you know, uh, times, you know, when in a transparent decision-making process, you know, everybody with their eyes wide open recognizes that in this instance, in this locale, it really makes sense to go ahead and make compromises about, you know, level of service and, 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 and traffic travel times and such. But if it's not adequately considered, then you run the risk of going ahead and, and having a bit of backlash or not really weighing that impact until after the fact. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good comments. Uh, James Starzak and then Mr. Shute again.
Yeah, um, I just kind of, I had a couple, couple ideas I, I just want to bounce out here. Um, just kind of overall thoughts, um, you know, in our discussion internally, um, and through this conversation, you know, I think that there are some priorities, uh, of the, of the state, um, that I think we would like to see, uh, addressed, you know, like, like Dave was saying, congestion, you know, um, safety, accessibility, mobility, those kinds of things that are, are really key to our program, um, could be integrated into these. And so I'm curious if you would find value in us, uh, taking some time to, to think about what's, you know, giving you some, giving you something to work with other, other than just saying, yeah, I don't really like this. We think this ought to be in here. You know, if, if we kind of gave, gave a little more time to think about, you know, what type of metrics we could, you, you, that could be integrated into these and get back to you with, with those suggestions. But kind of, kind of giving it a focus towards the things that are, are, are vital to our mission.
I, yeah, we can't do these in a vacuum, so, uh, uh, more input, the better. Whatever you want to share with us. Uh, Chris, I guess, you're, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. I think related to the previous two comments, uh, and recognizing, uh, concerns about congestion. I, I think what you would hear a lot of the public say, and certainly me say is, boy, I wish we were in that situation. But I mean, the, the honest truth is that congestion is, uh, laughable in Alaska or in Anchorage at least, most of the time, uh, when compared to other jurisdictions. So I think, um, we lose a lot of credibility with the public when we say we're focusing on, uh, congestion. Um, if, if in some, uh, future that, uh, happens, the RFA, the reinvestment focus areas, um, truly do blossom into, you know, um, higher density, mixed use centers that generate, uh, significant trips and create, um, increased congestion, I would, I would love to revisit this conversation then. Um, that would be a wonderful problem to have, cause that would mean that the RFAs, the land use is working as appropriately. Keep in mind, you know, the, the, I, I come at this from not a transportation planning, uh, perspective, but a community development perspective in which the land use goals are primary and the transportation goals are secondary and designed to serve the, the, um, you know, the zoning goals or the, or the community development goal. So I just wanted to caveat my comments with that, that I have a very clear bias, but, um, uh, congestion to me, you know, I just, in the public meetings that I've participated in, when we're talking about things like congestion, uh, I have to plug my ears, cause I usually get laughed out of the room. Thank you.
Yeah, ask someone in Seattle what they think about congestion. All right, Scott.
Um, yeah, along those lines, um, I have to agree that we don't have the problems we had in the late eighties, early nineties, even, even with the downturn, we had a point when I first started where many main arterials were stop and go, uh, multiple red lights. There's a few left, nothing like it used to be. And even then, we used to say we didn't have out of state congestion, but people don't like waiting through signals, three, three red lights. So we did some good things as a community and, 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 and a lot of that has gone, a lot of the waiting multiple signals. So I, I do think congestion had to be addressed and, and AMATS did some things that it made it far better than, than 20 years ago. And now there's other options, other modes. Uh, it's, it's, some of our roads actually lost 10 and 15,000 cars a day, you know, and became, had openings in traffic. But I, the only reason I'm echoing in and wanted to talk now is, is, um, for the AMATS process here is Aaron mentioned, um, he has performance measures that are federally required or a part of being an MPO and a lot of those are, some of those have to be congestion based. And so my, helped me understand is when you run the model, the traditional way back that led to, uh, congestion mitigation was to get the red out. We called it get the red out and, and you're right, it was vehicular focused. And now there's many focuses, but are you bound by the model to get the red out and meet performance measures and then score projects that don't do that? Are you, are you, do you risk non-performance of federal performance measures without some congestion points in here? And I'll just leave it at that.
Um, so really quickly, I did want to mention, uh, so we do actually have two new performance measures coming online that I'm trying to meet with the state and thank you, James, for helping with that, uh, that do deal with traffic congestion. Uh, we do have one of them in here and that's the non-single occupancy vehicle travel. Um, and then there's another one that's the peak period excessive delay. We didn't put it in here because we had some real concerns about if we could actually, you know, calculate the data and everything. So it's one of the things we're going to look at and we'll have to kind of look in here. Uh, so our model is required. Do we solely focus on congestion or required to? No, it's one of the many things we have to do, but that's where the congestion management process comes into play and helps with that. Big thing about congestion for us is that a lot of the congestion falls on higher functional class roads that are traditionally DOT owned and DOT paid for. So it's hard for us to come in and say, yeah, we're going to do this project on DOT's facility for them, like, that almost never works. Where we can come in as AMATS is helping with the secondary network that can help alleviate congestion on some of these larger facilities. So you may not see congestion in our criteria as the main, one of the main focal points as it has been in the past, because our thinking has shifted some of where can we best help with alleviating congestion, recognizing we can't afford these massive, large scale projects at these locations that are currently existing right now. We still have to account for congestion. That is not going away. I promise you, that's part of what the TSMO plan is, is how can we manage our existing system for congestion without necessarily having to come in and add massive new projects? So for example, the Glen Highway, uh, uh, Integrated Corridor Management Study is a piece of that. Uh, the TDM study that AMATS is doing is a piece of that. All these other little things are coming in to help us that help kind of come together with congestion, safety and everything else combined.
Thank you. Bart.
Um, thanks. I think Aaron kind of got to this a little bit, but you know, coming from a transit perspective and especially an equity, um, perspective, to get the red out exercise that used to be how we did it five, 10 years ago, is really an equitable approach. And when you start implementing projects through an equity lens, the traditional winners, you know, aren't necessarily prioritized for funding anymore. And those in AMATS is the traditional winners is usually single occupancy vehicles, um, and congestion focused. So I really support a direction that goes towards more of an equitable approach. And this is obviously coming from a transit perspective where we're trying to, you know, um, amplify the transit riders, the bikes and pedestrians at the same time doing road projects. And, you know, I don't, don't want to get in the habit of complimenting DOT too much, especially with Jim Amundson listening, but their major road projects do have, you know, large pedestrian bike, um, components to them. I think where this could be handy is where we start to scope pavement preservation projects where we know the scope is going to be limited to curb to curb. And if there are significant sidewalk or bicycle issues along that corridor, maybe we can use this criteria to help re-scope that to, in maybe a larger, more expensive project to, to get to what we're actually looking for. So, um, I think that's it.
That's a, that's a wonderful comment. I see no more hands up. I really appreciate everyone's time. Uh, this is, uh, this is the best way to do this is have lots of people offering their suggestions with their, their backgrounds and their expertise. Uh, Matt, have another comment. Go ahead. You're on mute, sir. You're on mute, sir.
So sorry. Okay, I'd I'd just love to hear a little bit more from Aaron about how the travel demand model uh output uh currently influences the project ranking and and uh who who makes the cut into a tip or what projects make the cut? Because I I I I know we get reports that um that show the 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 travel problem areas, but how how does that really influence the the scoring of what projects make it?
Well, so it really is more on the MTP level than on the tip level. Uh, the model is, the model is difficult to use on individual projects because it is really a regional model. And so when you want to see what kind of benefits you get from an individual project, it's harder to be able to show that. And so it for the tip, it really doesn't do a whole lot at this point. Uh, that's why we use it in the MTP to look at projects and say, how does it affect our you know, in the past, how did it affect level of service or other things? And what we're going to be looking at for hopefully future MTPs, if things work out, will be, you know, uh, VMT, VHD, VHT, all these other kind of things. So delay uh other things like that. And so the mo- the model really doesn't help out at the tip level. I hate to say it because of how it is developed. And we don't have a model that can look on a project by project basis.
Is there, are you saying there's opportunity to to add more statistics into the the congestion factor uh for for scoring at some later point? Like you said, uh, I I don't, I don't, I'm only familiar with VMT uh from those acronyms you just rattled off, but.
Yeah, and that was one of the things we were talking about. Is there something we could add to the scoring criteria that helps with um not only air quality that but that could help, you know, uh, uh, in a roundabout way with congestion? So like VMT reduction could potentially, you know, provide a benefit to helping the overall air quality as well as reducing congestion. So do we want to add something in here about, okay, does this project help reduce VMT? The problem we get into is how are we going to be able to um find that information out about a project? Uh, because our modeling takes quite a long time to do and is harder for one particular project to show that much difference on the network because of the regional size of it. So that's where we, you know, potentially are trying to come up with more of a strategic planning model that could uh put in projects or policies and do just a quick run of them and say, okay, does this help reduce VMT? If so, how much? Okay, is that something we can incorporate into our criteria? The problem is, is we don't know how that's going to look. So we were a little reluctant to add anything in here until we could actually get things in place to look at that.
Thanks, Aaron.
All right, Dave, you're up.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of go ahead and and um repeat the question, I think, that um James had asked, because I'm not sure that I I I, maybe I missed it, but I I don't know that there was a real clear answer. If we want to go ahead and provide um additional detailed comments, is there a timeline for that? I I I think it would help if there was a specific deadline um for comments. And and maybe to that point, I'll I'll just go ahead and throw out there. Uh, would Monday, May seventeenth, close of business be a suitable timeframe? I think if you guys get comments, um, by then, you'd still have um potentially adequate time to go ahead and hopefully consider those comments. Um, and I guess kind of following along on those themes, will there be an opportunity for DOT staff and AMATS, Muni staff to go ahead and collaborate on this as we have in the past? Um, or will this be just a an AMATS effort to kind of go ahead and and develop the comments for review by the technical advisory committee?
Uh, I had given the date of the twenty seventh, which was the week before documents are due for posting for the TAC on June tenth. But I'm fine with the seventeenth, too. That gives us even more time. And I'm happy to collaborate. That's what I think we're doing here. I'm happy to do that in more detail. We could get things together by the seventeenth and then maybe meet that week with DOT staff, with AMAT staff and DOT staff together to chew on those. That's absolutely fine with me.
Okay, and I apologize for going ahead and and apparently being asleep at the wheel when you said the twenty seventh. But um I, you know, I I would little bit, I would worry that if you get comments on the twenty seventh, there's really not much opportunity for give and take in the time span between then and when you need to get it out to the TAC.
Yeah, we only take, we were just takers. So I'm fine. I was going to send the criteria out uh tomorrow again with uh with a short note and a deadline. So I'm happy to do, we could do the seventeenth, I could, we could even do the twentieth and then uh give some time uh for DOT and uh AMAT staff to chew on them a little bit, go over them in detail. Uh, so that works. But I'll send something out tomorrow just so folks have the criteria again. And uh we'll send that uh complete streets checklist, I guess, as well. So since that's mentioned here, so. All right.
Thank you.
Well, this has been really helpful. I I appreciate it. I hope folks will take uh time to send us some detailed comments on these things. We want to make these uh work uh well for us and uh create the next iteration of the tip. So if there's nothing else, I guess we're done for the day. I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you. Have a good rest of your day, folks. Bye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.